Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's meeting of the Planning Board in Portsmouth. It's July 9th, 2009. Tonight, we're here for a public hearing to solicit public comment on the draft revised zoning ordinance dated June 11th, 2009, and the draft revised site plan review regulations dated April 24th, 2008. Copies of these documents are available for public inspection in the Planning Department, the Public Library, and on the city's website. I'd like to turn it over to Rick Tainter to provide a little bit of an overview of the process and to talk about the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. I'm going to do a presentation of about, probably about a half an hour to just give an overview of the zoning ordinance revision process and some of the key changes in the revision. And then the public hearing will be opened up for general comment. The zoning ordinance, the presentation I'm going to give is going to be focused, give a little bit of information on the context of the zoning ordinance changes, and the background, the process that we went through to make the changes, an overview of generally the changes, focus on some of the major changes that we've done, as well as some details. A look at some of the zoning map revisions, a little bit of discussion about the site review regulations, and then open up for discussion. The land use management system, the zoning ordinance is part of a very complex land use management system that involves elements of state law. State law establishes the requirements for zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, site plan review regulations. There's also the state building code. There are federal laws such as the Telecommunications Act, the First Amendment constitutional issues, stormwater regulations that impact the city. The Planning Board has its own regulations regarding site review, subdivision, and potentially design review that interact with the zoning ordinance. The city has general ordinances, ordinances relating to various boards, a water ordinance, a sewer ordinance, a stormwater ordinance, a noise ordinance, and so forth. The master plan gives general guidance and area-specific guidance to the zoning ordinance. And then there are other external codes like the International Building Code, which are related to the zoning ordinance but are not the same thing. So all of these, all of these various codes and regulations and laws interact, and the zoning ordinance is just part of that land use management system. In terms of boards in the community that are, that have responsibilities relating to land use, obviously, the City Council is one of the primary ones because it has the responsibility ultimately for adopting the zoning ordinance. And it also is involved in granting easements and licenses. So where the zoning ordinance may regulate land use on private land, private use of public land is regulated through easements and licenses. Then, once the ordinance is adopted, there are several boards that are specifically, have specific requirements or responsibilities in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Board is responsible for subdivision regulation, for site review of multifamily and non-residential uses, and for granting conditional use permits under certain situations. The Conservation Commission has very specific responsibilities with respect to wetlands in the zoning ordinance, both inland wetlands and coastal wetlands in certain areas. And it makes recommendations to the Planning Board on conditional use permits. The Historic District Commission, within the Historic District, is required in some instances to grant a certificate of appropriateness. The Historic District Commission looks at exterior changes, or certain types of exterior changes to buildings in the Historic District. And so, a use or a building in the Historic District needs to go both to the Planning Board, often for site review, not always, but usually to the Historic District Commission for a certificate of appropriateness. And then finally, the Board of Adjustment is somewhat different because it's outside, in many cases, outside the zoning ordinance, so to speak. Because if there's, a property owner wants to do something that isn't permitted by the zoning ordinance, either a use is not allowed, or something in terms of dimensions, setbacks, building height, coverage, and so forth, it goes to the Board of Adjustment for variance. And so, that's really outside the rules of the zoning ordinance, where the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Historic District Commission are applying the rules of the zoning ordinance. Oftentimes, the Board of Adjustment is providing exceptions or variances to those rules. But it also has roles in terms of granting special exceptions, which are uses that are allowed but may need to be looked at on a case-by-case basis to make sure that their impacts on the surrounding area are not detrimental. A major distinction in the whole land use system, then, is between the zoning ordinance and the site plan review regulations. The zoning ordinance is adopted by the City Council. The site plan review regulations are adopted by the Planning Board. The zoning ordinance divides the city into districts and regulates uses. Some uses are allowed, some are allowed essentially as of right. Some require a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. Some require a conditional use permit from the Planning Board, and some are prohibited. The zoning ordinance also, through that, those districts, imposes dimensional standards and intensity standards. So, as I mentioned before, the setbacks, height, coverage, and so forth, units per acre. It also establishes site development standards, for example landscaping, screening, off-street parking. And a somewhat different aspect is the regulation of signs, which are different from land use, but they're also included in the zoning ordinance. The site plan review regulations, by contrast to the zoning ordinance, which looks at district-wide or city-wide regulations, looks at site-specific conditions. And those could include landscaping and screening, traffic impacts, safety, congestion, stormwater impacts, snow and trash removal, and so forth. Those looking at how the use is actually applied on a given site and how to protect the community and the neighborhood. I mentioned the zoning map. This is the city's zoning map. I mentioned that the city is divided into zoning districts. There are base districts, and there are also overlay districts. The city has a number of overlay districts. Only two are shown on this map, the downtown overlay district, which regulates ground floor uses and off-street parking in a portion of the downtown, and the Historic District, which is an area where the Historic District Commission has jurisdiction for review of exterior changes. The zoning ordinance, one of the key aspects of the zoning ordinance that I mentioned was the use regulations. This is done through, in this case, through a table of use regulations, where in columns across the top are the zoning districts, and in rows down the side are uses that are defined in the zoning ordinance or described, and through a designation, in this case, P for permitted, I'm sorry, P for, yeah, P for permitted, S for special exception, C U for conditional use permit, and N for prohibited. That designates how the uses are regulated. We also, in the current, in the revised ordinance, have a separate column for cross-references to important supplemental regulations. The other, essentially, the other major part of the zoning ordinance, traditionally, the two parts are the use regulations and then the dimensional and intensity regulations. And that can be done with, as I mentioned, setbacks. In the lower left is, gives, is an illustration of front yards, side yards, rear yards, building height, coverage, and so forth. That's kind of the major way in which most zoning ordinances regulate development intensity. Some of them use other techniques such as floor-area ratio. And this illustration, the upper left, is an example of a floor-area ratio of one, where it basically is a ratio of the total floor area in a building to the area of a lot. And so, you could have a one-story building that covers the entire lot, a two-story building covering half the lot, a four-story building covering a quarter of the lot, and so forth. And it really plays out in many different ways. It's a much more flexible way to regulate development than simply using yards and so forth. And this illustration may be difficult to see from where you are, but it shows a variety of ways to achieve the same floor-area ratio. This is an example of a site plan that might be submitted under the Planning Board's site plan regulations. As I mentioned before, the use and the intensity of use are regulated by zoning. But then you come into a, after the use is essentially determined, what it's, whether it's permitted or requires a special exception and so forth, it comes before the Planning Board for a review of the specifics in terms of traffic circulation, landscaping, stormwater management, and so forth. And that's where you really get into the very site-specific aspects of it. So it's important to remember that there are tiers of review. And you start from the large-scale review at the zoning ordinance and then move into site review regulations. Sort of as background of how we got here, in 2005, the city revised its master plan and identified four areas of priority, downtown vitality, improvement of some of the major commercial corridors coming into the downtown, supporting a diverse community, and protecting resources and encouraging sustainability. And those priorities were then more closely defined in goals in a variety of areas and objectives. And then there were very specific implementation strategies for each of those areas that were recommended. In terms of where we are in terms of the existing zoning ordinance, the last time we had a major revision was 1995. Since then, in the more than a decade since then, there have been many, many incremental revisions. And those many times have been responses to specific conditions that have arisen. But that's created layers of changes over time that have made the ordinance very complex and sometimes very hard to use. Also, what has happened in the intervening time is that there have been new federal and state laws that have been adopted that the city needs to respond to. One of the older ones is called the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which essentially places limits on the ability of communities to regulate cell towers. So that one of the, one of the things that has been added to these, the revised zoning regulations, is a section that is a little bit more specific about how you deal with cell towers. That hasn't necessarily been a major issue recently in Portsmouth, but in many communities, it has become an issue. Much more recently, last year, were two laws, two laws were adopted at the state level, one dealing with small wind energy systems, which goes into effect the day after tomorrow. And so, it's timely, and so there's a new section of the zoning ordinance dealing with that. And it was a workforce housing law that was originally due to have come into effect last week, but the legislature granted an extension, so it now goes into effect next January 1st. And that creates parameters within which communities can, are able to or not able to regulate workforce housing proposals. The zoning ordinance, in addition to this comprehensive revision, or leading up to this comprehensive revision, we have had a number of significant additions to the zoning ordinance. In 2004, the downtown overlay district was adopted, which essentially prohibits residential uses on the ground floor of a good portion of the Central Business District in order to encourage the economic vitality of the area, and also regulates off-street parking in that area. The Residential Density Initiative Planned Unit Development Ordinance was adopted in 2007 to provide a means for increasing the density, residential density of a site where a good proportion of the units are restricted as affordable units. And then, also in 2007, there were revisions made to the height regulations in the Central Business A District that were accompanied by new design standards for that area. So this process, this revision process started three years ago, April 2006. The first step was to audit the zoning ordinance, and that was completed in September 2006. Since then, we've had over 60 meetings, 45 Planning Board work sessions, eight meetings, work sessions or meetings with the City Council, a dozen meetings with other municipal boards, including the Historic District Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Sustainability Committee, and the Blue Ribbon Committee on Housing. There have been a number of referrals from the City Council to the Planning Board at the same time. When a zoning proposal comes into the City Council, it's automatically referred to the Planning Board for review. And that includes that residential density incentive planned unit development that I mentioned earlier. Another initiative called the Non-Residential Planned Unit Development, which was not adopted, proposed restriction on formula businesses, basically chains or franchises in the downtown, which was also not adopted, and then this Central Business building height changes. The, last year, last April, April 2008, the Planning Board, after a period of review, came up with a final draft of revised site plan review regulations. But because those regulations are so intertwined with zoning, it's important that the zoning revision and the site plan review regulations be adopted at the same time. So they've been on the city's website, on the Planning Department's website, for over a year, but they will, they will not be actually enacted on until the City Council enacts revisions to the zoning ordinance. And then the draft zoning ordinance was finally published last month, and we are now beginning the process of public hearings. Key objectives of the zoning ordinance, to promote sustainability, environmental protection stewardship, to balance flexibility with predictability. One of the, one of the problems often with the zoning ordinance is it gets very, as it gets more convoluted, it gets very restrictive, and it's very hard to adjust things in ways that would make sense. And so, there has been an attempt made to provide some more flexibility, but also to make sure that it's predictable, that people know what they're going to get in their neighborhood and developers know what they can expect. Also, it's important to balance resource protection with private property rights and economic development. So we've been, through the whole process, we've been looking back and forth at how far to go with resource protection and how far to, where we should, should hold the line to promote economic development. One thing we want to do is use common sense. There are many places where the, in the ordinance, where it's just, it's really hard to understand. And so, we've tried to think about what makes sense and make changes that do make sense and also make the ordinance much more user-friendly because it is very convoluted. This is one of the things we don't want to have happen, says this subdivision project was abandoned because no one could read the local zoning regulations. This is one of the things that we sometimes feel when we look at these zoning ordinances. They are so convoluted and so complex that nobody can understand them. So we've made a really big effort to try to make this easier to understand. And we've done this in a number of ways. One is to revise the section numbering system so that you can tell at a glance what part of the ordinance you're in. In the current ordinance, you actually sometimes have to go back four to six pages to see which section you're in because of the way it's organized. We've added many more tables. Many times, regulations are much easier to describe if you just have a line and a number rather than trying to put it into a sentence. The sentences make it sometimes more ambiguous or difficult to understand. So we've used tables, a couple of examples that we've listed here. Many uses in the ordinance have specified a minimum distance between a specific non-residential use and a residential district. And rather than kind of repeat those sentences over and over again, we've created a table that sets that out. Another example is hours of operation of certain businesses. So we've put those into a table. Those aren't the only ones, but those are a couple of examples. In terms of definitions, we've tremendously expanded the number of terms that are defined in the ordinance. There's a, the section, the final section of the ordinance, Section 15, Article 15, is much expanded. And we've, every time we came to a term that there was some disagreement about, or it was, there was some ambiguity about, we made sure to try to get a clearer definition. And in the ordinance, we've actually highlighted the defined terms. So wherever you see in the ordinance, one of those bold sans serif fonts, you'll see that that's a defined term. You can go right to the definition section to find out what it's supposed to mean. And then we've used page layout. There's a lot more white space, a lot more indentation. These are kind of, these are not technical things to do, but they're just meant to make it easier for people to follow where they are in the ordinance. The structure of the ordinance, we have 15 articles, which are the same number that we have in the current ordinance, but we've made it, we've reorganized a lot of things to try to make them more logical and also to try to encourage an ordinance that's more easily expandable as we make changes over time. So it begins with three very short sections, a section on purpose, a section on administration and enforcement, and a section on non-conforming lots, buildings, structures, and uses. Those are the, those are things that were, that are in place, that are legally in place before a zoning change would otherwise make them essentially non-conforming. Then there's a long section on the zoning districts with the use regulations and the dimensional intensity standards, as I said before. Those are the core of every zoning ordinance. We have a section on the overlay districts, a flexible development section. It provides alternate ways to develop with large parcels. Some supplemental use standards where you've got a particular use that you don't want to describe everything in the use table, so you have a separate section to describe the special standards that have to be applied to that use. An example might be a restaurant, or an automobile dealership. Or that, that's the type of thing, you don't want to put all of the regulations on a use table, but you do want to have particular regulations for that type of use. There are special uses, things like cell towers, wind, and also the sexually oriented businesses, which is an area that's protected by First Amendment and many, all communities really have to address those in their regulations somehow just to protect the community. Site development, I'm sorry, environmental protection standards, that's where wetlands and earth removal come in. Site development standards such as off-street parking and landscaping and loading. A sign section, some performance standards such as noise impacts. A small section on impact fees, which we don't really use at this point, but it's there as a placeholder. And then the section on definitions, which is, as I mentioned, is much expanded from before. In terms of some of the things we've done to promote sustainability in this ordinance and in the site development, site review regulations, we've, a number of places we've focused on low-impact development, which is development that attempts to primarily retain stormwater or treat, treat in me, stormwater and onsite rather than letting it flow offsite into the city's stormwater system. So it's a way to reduce the off-flow of stormwater off the site. There are several sections where something called Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design is included. That's a national rating, rating program that rates buildings or areas on how well they do in energy conservation and environmental protection. So we've addressed that in the Central Business Height Regulations in the new district that we're calling the Gateway District, and in some other areas as well. There are, we try to limit the amount of impervious surface by, through regulations such as a maximum lot coverage and minimum open space requirement. We've introduced something called reserve parking areas, where a commercial use or multifamily use that can develop the site with less than the required parking, as long as they provide for availability of expansion parking later on if they need it. But it's a way to not pave all the site if you don't need it. And provisions for sharing parking between uses. We've made changes in the Wetlands Protection Regulation to encourage sustainability. As I mentioned, some of these regulations are a site plan review. We've adopted, or adapted, I should say, lighting regulations that are called dark-skies friendly, that don't have light wash into the sky, but try to keep light on the site and not going vertically off the site. And they're very simple things, like promoting the use of rain barrels is also one of the things, is a sustainability initiative. This is a graphic from a presentation on the building code, but just talks about, it's not just the, it's not just the land use regulations, but sustainability is often much more a feature of the building. They've got energy code, mechanical code, building code, and plumbing code. All of the, all of the structural and life safety codes, a lot of those things have sustainability issues built into them, energy efficiency, indoor environmental quality, material conservation, water efficiency, and so forth. And so, land use and zoning is just one part of the sustainability complex. Here are a couple of examples of how master plan goals have been translated into actions in the zoning ordinance. One of the goals of the master plan was to protect neighborhood character. One of the issues that has come up in some areas is residential conversions, conversions of older structures to multifamily uses where they get, the buildings get expanded and really grow to be inconsistent with the scale of the neighborhood. So one of the recommendations is to change those, so that those residential conversions can still take place, but it's not an expansion, it's just simply a conversion. One of the goals of the master plan was to improve commercial corridors, the quality of, the aesthetic quality and so forth of the commercial corridors. And one of the strategies we've come up with to address that is what's called a Gateway District, and within the Gateway District, a Gateway Plan Development. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on. One of the goals is to protect natural resources. And we've changed, expanded some of the jurisdictional areas for wetlands, and we've introduced management of the buffer area, management performance standards in the buffer area. And then, protecting and enhancing community character. And we've looked at sign regulations and actually introduced a new concept of sign districts to address that. Some details that are in the zoning ordinance. One of the things that is in the ordinance is a minimum standard, a standard for open space for all of the zoning districts, or most of the zoning districts. And one of the things you find is when you've got a very small percentage requirement for open space, it becomes meaningless because you get these little patches across the site. So we've done two kind of complementary things. One is to create a minimum standard for what qualifies as open space in terms of required open space. And the other is to remove the requirement for open space altogether in the CBA and CBB districts because we find that the quality of open space that you get there through that standard really is meaningless. We've, I mentioned before, the idea of balancing flexibility and predictability. One of the things that you find in an older community like Portsmouth is that a lot of the neighborhoods have many houses, many properties that don't conform in some way. And a very common way is for the front yards of the existing homes to be much less than the requirement in zoning. So one of the things that is being introduced here is an exception so that if you've got a whole street, a whole, essentially a whole block with all of the houses at 15 feet setback from the street, and the requirement is 30 feet, that you can actually pull the house up to 15 feet and be like your neighbors rather than being forced to be much further back or go to the Board of Adjustment for variance. There are some changes in terms of off-street parking. We, I mentioned the reserve parking earlier. We've also introduced a concept of maximum number of parking spaces for large developments so that you try to avoid the sea of parking. And we've, we're proposing that parking be located beside or behind a building rather than between the building and the street in order to improve the streetscape. We've adjusted the off-street loading requirements. We've introduced standards for drive-through uses to limit congestion and impacts on neighborhoods. In terms of resource protection and sustainability, the, currently, the jurisdictional area is a half acre. Basically, if you've got a wetland that's less than a half an acre, that is not addressed by the Wetlands Protection Regulations. The proposed zoning is to reduce that to 10,000 square feet. So basically, going from 20,000 square, 21,000 square feet down to 10,000 square feet, adding some more areas, and also including vernal pools. Interestingly, that doesn't really have a great geographic impact. On this map, you can see the light, light blue shaded areas are the areas that are currently within the buffer area of jurisdictional wetlands now. And the dark blue areas are the areas that are, would be added to the jurisdictional area by going down to the 10,000-square-foot limit. So these are areas that are, this is scientifically based, but, and it does protect important areas, but it doesn't expand the protection terribly greatly. In some areas, it does, but not throughout the entire city. And then the, it's very difficult to see, but there are some, some red dots here and here and a couple other places. Those are the vernal pools that are not currently encompassed by wetlands buffer areas. So those would be added as well. But again, it's, it's not a, it's important from the point of view of environmental protection. It's not a huge expansion of the area that is being covered. We're looking at tidal wetlands regulations along the whole of North Mill Pond and South Mill Pond. Certainly, portions of those are, portions of North Mill Pond are covered right now, but we want to make sure that those wetlands are covered. I mentioned that we have best management practices, basically performance practices in the, to address stormwater protection and to address vegetation management within those buffer areas. There are buffer strips and limited cut areas. Those are, those are on the zoning side. On the site review side, we have regulations in the draft site review regulations to, that are encouraging reductions in impervious services, to encourage pedestrian and bicycle circulation, to make lighting and dark-skies friendly, to improve landscaping and screening, and to protect water resources. One of the major changes in this ordinance is the introduction of the Gateway District. And this is a zoning strategy that we're proposing for the Lafayette Road corridor. And there's, it's actually a two-part thing. There's a Gateway District that is being proposed, and I'll describe that. But within that district is a land use type that we're calling Gateway Plan Development. The Gateway District, as we're looking at it right now, would go from the Rye Town Line The Gateway District, as we're looking at it right now, would go from the Rye Town Line to the Route 1 bypass along Lafayette Road, and would encompass all those areas that are currently zoned, general business, office research, perhaps some mixed residence business, and perhaps some industrial. But basically, the zoning, this is Lafayette Road coming up through here, and it's kind of a patchwork of zoning, primarily general business, but some other uses as well. And so, this would be the new Gateway District. And it doesn't have to be limited to Lafayette Road, but this is, that's the area that we've looked at initially. We may look at other areas of the city for that as well. In terms of looking at where we, how we got to this, the master plan suggested, or one of the goals of the master plan was to redevelop commercial areas in a way that is compatible with the quality of site and building design of the downtown area. So using the downtown as a model, and how can we gradually increase development throughout the city to get to that level of quality. And an objective in the master plan is to encourage high-quality mixed-use redevelopment along the major corridors. And mixed-use, mixing residential and commercial uses together, it's a sustainability thing, it's also a way to encourage redevelopment. And then the strategy is to review the zoning regulations and designated business districts and corridors, and revise them to promote improvements in the streetscape. And so that's what we're doing here. We're trying to encourage mixed-use development, mixing residential and commercial development together, enhance the character of the corridor, expand housing opportunities for moderate-income residents, incorporate pedestrian and bicycle access and circulation, and use the existing transportation infrastructure efficiently. Essentially, try to keep, try to reduce number of turning movements, allow much more intra-corridor movement than there is right now. And this is, this is an example, it's a way to help visualize what we're talking about. This is a visualization, a photo montage that was done for the City of Glenview, Illinois. And, you know, the existing corridor view that you see in this photo is really something, there are portions of Route 1 that are even of this character. And this series of photographs or photo montage gives an idea of how, over time, a corridor like this could change. And obviously, the one that everybody wants to do, it's a very expensive thing, is to reduce the, to remove the overhead power lines and utility lines. That's a very simple thing to put into a drawing, very expensive to do. But landscaping is something that can be done, and in this case, the first step is to put in, to allow some infill building close to the street, as well as landscaping and the little park, and then to start looking at taller buildings, maybe multi-use buildings, and then looking at pedestrian improvements, and again, allowing more intensive development, using more intensive development to encourage an enhancement of the streetscape, and then incorporating transit more effectively as well. One example that many people look to in this regard is down in Cape Cod, it's called Mashpee Commons. It's a former shopping center that had a supermarket and a big parking lot, and a developer came in and turned it into a little mixed-use village, and it's now the town center. So, originally, this is what the shopping center looked like, and today, this is what it looks like. It's just been totally transformed, using the power of redevelopment and to enhance it and make it a much more pedestrian-friendly place. And this, again, used to be the parking lot of a conventional shopping center, and this is what can happen. Many people look at a place like Lafayette Road and figure it's already totally developed, but it can be redeveloped over time. So what we're looking at is, again, this is the corridor, I just highlighted some places here, Yocan's, Market Basket, Water Country, South Gate Plaza, Walmart. These are some landmarks along the corridor, but it goes from the Rye Line up to the bypass as we've designated it now. I mentioned that there's, we're talking about a district and a type of development. In the district, we would propose use regulations and dimensional standards that are based on the current general business district, which is what most of the corridor is, but with a reduced minimum front yard that would accommodate a consistent ninety-two-foot-wide right-of-way along Lafayette Road, which would comply with the state's plans for the area, and to have a maximum front yard and push parking behind redeveloped areas, the buildings. And then, within that, by conditional use, get, allow some residential use and a mixed-use development, further reductions in front yard, greater coverage, basically more flexibility and incentives for better design. Another area of the zoning ordinance are sign regulations. Sign regulations address sign types, the area of signs, the height and setback of signs, and the ways in which signs may or may not be illuminated. Just some examples of types of signs. We have projecting signs, this one has roof signs, awning signs. This is a shopping center in Cranston, Rhode Island. This is something that's more familiar, that shows a whole variety of types of signs that can work together. It's just, it's not a matter of necessarily constraining development, but just defining the standards under which signs are allowed. And then there are very interesting signs, and one of the real difficulties is determining what a sign is. And this is a case where there's, somebody has put a truck on its head and put a sign on it, or classic eyeglasses in the front yard. These are examples of signs, and so one of the things that has to be done in sign regulations is to determine what is and what is not a sign, and what you're going to allow and what you're not going to allow. One of the things that we've changed in this ordinance is actually defining sign districts. Right now, signs are regulated according to the regular land use districts, but as I said earlier, signs are quite different from land use. In some cases, you may want to regulate them differently. So, we're proposing to establish six sign districts in the city, and to, we've considered, completely revised the sign regulations to look at these on a district-by-district basis. Another major change that we're looking at is revising the way in which the city manages or regulates parking in the downtown area. The city has a very complex regulation right now. It has a purpose that was very important when it was adopted back in nineteen seventy-seven. It was to promote shared parking in garages in the downtown area, and discourage a proliferation of individual parking lots or individual garages at street level that break up the experience of walking along the street. And it has worked for a number of years, but it has become increasingly complex. It's very hard to explain and to understand, and it's really time for a change. And the Economic Development Commission has been looking at this for many years, changes have been discussed for many years. The things that we're proposing now are not new ideas, but we think it's time for, to implement some of them. Our objectives in making the changes are to continue the flexibility that exists, to, again, to continue promoting public and shared parking, and discourage service parking lots, and to simplify and update the regulations. Ultimately, in the long term, it would be, I think, a good idea to separate the parking, the financing of parking from development permitting, and that's essentially what happens under the current regulations, but we're taking this one step at a time. So, the changes in the regulations are of two types. One is to modify the parking regulations in downtown, and our strategies are, first of all, to eliminate parking requirements for first-floor, non-restaurant uses. Those are the uses that generate a lot of foot traffic, that are supported by the on-street metered parking and by the parking garages, and those are the ones that you want to encourage to be vital and vibrant. So, by eliminating the parking requirements for those, you basically are encouraging those, you're not throwing roadblocks in the way of them, and helping to support small businesses. Also want to standardize the parking requirements. There are many different ways to look at parking. In the downtown, as distinct from some other areas of the city, there are many buildings that have lots of different uses of them. So every time a use changes, you have to look at the parking regulations again. So one of, another change we're trying to do to make this simpler is to have a standardized parking requirement based on floor area rather than on use. And then we're, when we do the parking calculations, we're suggesting that the first four spaces be deducted in order to remove the burden, or reduce the burden on very small, very small businesses. The second part of the downtown parking is to update and simplify the in-lu fee. That's the major part of the ordinance right now, is that property users can pay a fee, essentially, in lieu of providing parking on-site. And we have a number of changes that are, try to make this fee system both simpler and more up-to-date. One is to require that any new residential uses provide their parking on-site, because that's been an issue, where residents move into the downtown and then have no place to park, especially during snow emergencies. So, that is one thing that needs to be done. Eliminating the, right now, the way that the fee is calculated is it looks back to a baseline in nineteen ninety-seven, when the ordinance was adopted. And so we want to eliminate that concept, so it's much simpler to understand and just apply the in-lu fee to, or the parking requirement to any increase in parking demand, and increase the in-lu fee to the point where it's forty to fifty percent of the estimated cost of providing a parking space. So, it would be, it would be a sliding scale based on size, ranging from twenty-two-hundred per space to forty-four-hundred per space. I think we're, there will be some savings and some expenditures for property owners from this. There'll be lower parking requirements, but a higher fee per space not provided. So, it will work out differently for different property owners. And where this applies, right now, the parking applies in the Central Business District, and the Central Business District, as shown on the left side, is this red area, and it goes all the way down Islington Street to the park, and covers a very large area. We're proposing that, both that the Central Business District be reduced in size, but also that the in-lu fee apply to, the special regulations apply only to the downtown overlay district, which is a subset of the Central Business. So that really addresses most of the changes in text, there's just a small portion more of the presentation. The next part of this is looking at zoning map changes. We actually haven't presented those yet, but this is kind of a preview of where, the kinds of changes that we're looking at. One, as I just mentioned, was on Islington Street, this Islington Street goes from the downtown down, well, this map goes down almost to the Route 1 bypass, but it has a number of different zoning districts. Central Business extending down to the park, then a little block of apartment, and then the mixed residential business. We're actually proposing to pull the Central Business District back to about Parker Street or Tanner Street, that area, and to rezone the remainder of the corridor, mixed residence business. What that does is two key things. One is the maximum height of buildings from sixty feet down to forty feet. And right now, you have a building height of sixty feet adjoining a residential area with a maximum height of thirty-five feet. So there's a big potential for impact in those neighborhoods, and the Central Business District is only one lot deep, so it's a very congested area. We felt it was important to make that change. But it also eliminates some uses that might be, have higher impacts in the neighborhood, and we can get into some of those questions later on, if there are questions about that. Another set of changes has to do with changes to the boundaries of the Historic District. There are essentially four types of changes, I believe, that are being proposed. One is an extension of the Historic District. Right now, the Historic District comes down to about this point on Islington Street. There's proposal to extend it another three or four blocks, down to include the, basically down to the intersection of Bartlett Street, so it'll take in that whole area. There is a, on Middle Street, the Historic District now comes down to the intersection, I'm sorry, on Lafayette, comes down to the intersection of, Middle. Middle comes down to the intersection of Lafayette, sorry. And so, it'd be adding another couple of blocks, this is a Lafayette School right here, come right down to South Street. So, it would just be those two blocks that would be added on Lafayette. There is a small addition in opposite the former Parade Mall, there are a couple of blocks there that are currently not in the Historic District that would be added. And then, along Middle Street, currently the district is a specified distance back from the edge of the road, and the change is to make this consistent with other parts of the city, where the boundaries would be the boundaries of lots that front on Middle Street, not the distance back, so you don't catch little corners of lots and so forth. But this is actually a close-up, I should, could have shown you this to you earlier. So, right now, the, this expansion is to expand Islington Street from Dover and Union Streets down to Bartlett and Jewel Court, to expand it along Lafayette Road from Middle Street to South Street, and this little corner of Hanover Street between Bridge Street and Vaughn Street. And these little green areas, if you can see them, are the areas that would be removed from the district by making it conform to the lot lines. And there are a couple of pink areas that are additions where you've got larger lot lines. Out in Osprey Landing, that area, there's an overlay district out there that is very complex in the zoning ordinance, and we've tried to simplify it as much as possible. It basically is there to implement a court settlement, and I don't have to get into detail at this point, but it is, what we've done is we've reduced the size of the district and drastically reduced the amount of text in the zoning ordinance. And then we're also looking at other areas. There is a city council referral to look at this area bounded by the Route 1 bypass, Bartlett Street, Kate Street, and Cottage Street. We're looking at that, that would be an area for potential rezoning, and there are a number of other requests that have come in over several years to look at rezoning, and we will be looking at those as well. Continuing after this process are some other things that we, that are not in the current ordinance draft, but that will be looked at over the next year or so. Looking at implementing design review standards and regulations, or regulations, looking at areas where some things might belong in the zoning ordinance, or they might, maybe they should go in city ordinances such as the noise. And looking at some of the external regulations. The PES Development Authority has its own zoning ordinance, and the relationship of the city ordinance to that ordinance should be clarified. And there's also an airport approach overlay district that's required by the Federal Aviation Administration that we need to look at and see if we can clean that up a little bit. We're also going to be looking at non-conforming lots. There are many lots throughout the city, where, many areas throughout the city where a majority of the lots don't conform to zoning. And what that means is that all, anybody who wants to do anything in those areas ends up going to the Board of Adjustment and going through maybe some expense that really isn't justified. And so we're going to be looking at those areas and seeing if we can come up with new regulations that are sensitive to the historic context of the neighborhoods. And one particular area we'll be looking at is Atlantic Heights, and looking, seeing if there's, there are new regulations that can happen there as well. In terms of implementation, what has to happen, the city council needs to adopt a revised zoning ordinance, and amend the planning board ordinance in some areas, and amend the site plan review ordinance, and the planning board needs to adopt new site plan review regulations. And the process that we're going through, that you probably all know that this zoning ordinance and site review regulations are posted on the city's website, we're in the, this is the first of four public hearings. We also have a public hearing next week on the draft senior housing provisions, which are separate from this overall regulation, but if anybody's here specifically for that, I'm sure that the board would accept comments on that as well. Ultimately, in September, or maybe as late as October, the planning board would make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council would take this under consideration and act on it. So with that, I will open it up or give it back to the chair for questions.
Thank you for that excellent review, Rick. Maybe we should turn the podium around? And I'd just like to thank you for coming, those of you in the audience here at City Hall, and just remind you that we're going to be focusing on taking comments this evening. And if folks have questions, we will write them down and either address them at the end of the meeting, or if we need to do further research, we'll get back to folks about that. So, first-time speakers can come up and speak for five minutes or so, and please state your name and address when you come up.
My name is Michael Donner. I live at 152 Hillside Drive in Portsmouth. And I have four areas of concern. I moved to the city in nineteen ninety-one, and I'm very happy to say that all that I've seen occur in the city is improvement year after year. And I'm very happy with that. But a few areas that I should also premise that I've had ten years' experience on a planning board, five years of being chairman, three years of sitting on a zoning board of adjustment, so I do have some background. In the last few years, we've had some people come into town, new carpetbaggers. I consider myself an old carpetbacker. That, that they have not looked at the city as, you know, let's abide by the regulations. So my concerns are, number one is in the site plan review process. So my concerns are, number one is in the site plan review process. And I know we have to be very careful in using words like misrepresentation, lying, How about the word bamboozled? Can we use that word? That would grab the attention of a Superior Court judge when these problems end up in Superior Court. I was just in court on Monday in Brentwood, and I think the word bamboozled would've really opened the eyes of the judge. 'Cause I, I, I know these judges don't have a lot of time to look at the problems intently, but there are certain buzzwords that will grab your attention. It seems like there are certain people that can hire a twenty-five cent lawyer and beat the subdivision regulations. And this is what I feel has been done by a certain entity in, in Portsmouth. And the city, it's costing the city a ton of money, because I don't think the regulations in certain areas have had enough teeth. Mr. Hopley has been embroiled in a catch-22. And I really feel for you, because you can only mind-read so far into a plan. And it, it's, I don't know of anybody that would've caught that. The other thing on, on, in the regulations, when somebody takes out a permit, and they have a year to do the work, and if the plan was not thorough in explaining exactly the circumstances or the outcome of that work, and the only time that the city, or the residents, or the abutters would ever have an idea of the consequences of the project is after it was completed. But the abutters, now see, the, the, the permit was taken out January first, the work started June first, it was completed September first, you, the abutters or someone who would have objection to that by statute. We had thirty days from the time that the permit was, or the planning board agreement allowed them to do this work, but yet the work was started for six months, finished three months later, and now we get to see what the outcome was. And it, and it clearly wasn't the intent of the original plan to the average person. Comments made at that February meeting are totally indicative of, of what I'm trying to say about, when I first saw that, I was amazed. You know, I don't, I don't want to get into specifics. City doesn't need any more litigation. Is there a way to protect in the ordinance from this happening again? I don't care how good the inspectors are, there are going to be people out there that are just a little bit quicker, a little bit more deviant. There's always somebody that's gonna try to beat the system. Second signage. A good friend of mine, diet judge, very conservative. I'm very liberal, that's why we get along. Gave him up for a visit, and we went out to dinner, and as we drove by the automobile dealership in question, he said, "Wow, I wonder where his electric bill is." And then he said, "That's a big sign." I said, "It's, it's, it isn't a sign." He said, "What?" I explained, "Not a sign." Well, he said, "Your ordinance isn't worth a crap." Quote. "Okay, I understand that. I know that. What can be done to fix it?" He basically said, "Any business that has any identification on its building or on the premises," is basically where he comes from, south of us, "a sign." Okay, I understand that. The city understood that a, a certain person in my neighborhood put up a three-by-three sign to inform the public that he had a lawnmower business, a lawn-cutting business. Two weeks later, the city informed him to take the sign down. Didn't take long. So you wonder where the equity is. And it's all in the ordinance. Aces and aces, spades and spades. So we're driving down the bypass, we get to the Rotary, and he just said, "For instance, these signs, billboard signs by Lily." He said, "If, if there was a two-by-three sign in the middle of that billboard, what would you, would you consider that billboard a sign or just a two-by-three?" That's a good question. So do we have definitions for that? I mean, I've been looking at the ordinance, and it's vague. But I do know that guy that was trying to advertise his lawn-cutting business. The city wasn't too vague with him. The third thing, in the rezoning, the revision of the zoning article, medical equipment, such as MRIs, CAT scans, the new generation of, of diagnostic radiological When the hospital redid itself, they had to cite their, that type of equipment in a way so that it would not affect the gaseous system of the, of the hospital, any gases, the electrical system, the computer system. And if you, any of you pay attention to, "Where is the CAT scan machine?" Or, "The vans that come in?" They're in a very isolated area that would have no detriment to the rest of the plant. Now, what's happening in medicine is, the, the new medical slot machine is, ka-ching, the MRI machine. The old ones that have been rehabbed by the manufacturers, Seaball GE, Westinghouse, to name a few, that are put in vans and are being offered for lease or sale to outfits like Sports Medicine. And I came to the DAC meetings when this was happening, to make this, the DAC aware that citing these pieces of equipment is very serious. The VA Manchester, in its rebuilding of, of the hospital, had a plan for $1.6 billion to recite their radiation department. Someone really took a look at those plans and said, "You know, this is wrong. This is dangerous." So six and a half million dollars later, they got it right. And it was for a reason. I've had experience in this area. I worked for the FCC. I know the dangers of this equipment. I am, my own victim of high-level radiation. Then the outcome was thyroid cancer. So I have, I can't have any more hit records. So I, I'm very concerned that in the future, when these new doctor outfits that wanna make a killing on doing their own MRIs and CAT scans, that this equipment is, is looked at as serious, it has serious dangers, that they seem to be able to skid under the radar like Sports Medicine did. I'm trying to remember what number four was. But I do applaud the planning board. I like what I'm seeing. And I know no matter how good the zoning regulations are, how tight they can be, how specific they can be, it's the zoning board of adjustment that can undo everything. And this was proven with the Toyota dealership. From day one, when they approached the zoning board of adjustment, they were on the boulevard of green lights. Bigger sign, no problemo. The residential commercial buffer that was set up in nineteen ninety-nine by the, the revision of the zoning amendment, I believe that was ninety-nine, that was stripped. And then wetlands, and on and on. And we, and we also have a Superior and Supreme Court in the state of New Hampshire that have no idea what wetlands is all about. In the time that I was on the planning board in Merrimack, New Hampshire for ten years, we were the first community to, this is back in the seventies, have zoning regulations, lot sizes determined by soils. Lot sizes pertaining to houses that had their own wells and septic systems, not the ones in the inner part of Merrimack that had soil and water. And we spent a lot of nights getting this through what was then the Water Supply and Pollution Board. But we were a leader in the state, and a lot of people came to us after to copy our regulations. So I have some idea what soils are, and what aquifer recharge areas are. And when a court calls that area adjacent to the dealership a reeducated drainage area, that goes to show you how much time they spent paying attention to what was really on the ground. And the subdivision I live in, Hillside Drive, the name fits the landscape. It is hillside. We, that whole area from South Street down drains through three culverts under the bypass that were put there many years ago, and enlarged into that area, through the old, full of land that's still there, and then out to Sackamore Creek. Eventually, our street drainage ends up in Sackamore Creek. I've walked the land. I don't think any judge, other judge has. But I don't know how a city or a town can have the ability to emphasize that importance to a regulatory body like the Supreme Court. So we lost. So these, these are basically my concerns. Zoning Board of Adjustment, I don't know if they need a redirection of attention, but it just seemed like that in this particular case, if you look at the spirit of the zoning articles as they existed when that property was purchased and to be redeveloped into an automobile dealership, and then all of the subsequent lifting of the regulations that occurred over time, doesn't make the abutters in the area feel like the zoning regulations are protection for us. And then, looking at other parts of the city, who's next? It's a majority feeling in our neighborhood that not the planning board, but the zoning board of adjustment gave it all away. Thank you for listening to me.
Um, this is some notes. Do we have your name?
It's on there.
Okay, great.
I tried to, on seventy-seven, tried to pull up the computer. All they got was the dates. I can't drive. Kevin was nice enough to take me tonight.
Well, thank you for coming.
If you could just mail that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers?
I would also like to echo what Rick Tainter mentioned about the timing of, of things. Next Thursday, July sixteenth, we'll be having a regular planning board meeting, and at that time, we'll be taking up a hearing on the senior housing ordinance. And there will be three more hearings at which we will be soliciting public comments about the revised zoning ordinance, July twenty-third, August sixth, and September tenth. We will be setting up an email address in the next week or two, so that we can receive comments via email, so check the city website for that. And please feel free to submit your comments, because we're here to listen, basically.
So, yeah, I'm not seeing any other speakers rising, so it looks like we need to close the public hearing. Did you have a comment? Okay, well, thank you for an excellent presentation, Rick. Yeah, good point. We need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Thanks.
And so we'll see you next week in our regularly scheduled planning board meeting, which I believe will be starting with a non-public session at six o'clock, so mark your calendars.
Next week?
Thank you.
Next week.
No, I mean, I think it was really great, great review.
I thought you were starting at six thirty.
No.
Six?
No.
You're trying to send us something?
Yeah.